All right. Good evening. This is the June 26, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I am calling to order. Our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Present.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next item on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out there and nobody did sign up. So in the event that somebody came in, was there anybody that wants to speak during open forum? All right, seeing none, I will close open forum and I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
We have a motion by councilmember Olson, second by councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next then is presentations. We have two this evening and the first one is special for our council and the citizens of Cottage Grove, which is an Eagle Scout Award for Kristen Meyer. And so what I'd ask is council, join me and Chris if you want to come up and we'll do a presentation. All right. So as I was talking to him a little bit before we got started this evening and his parents are in the audience here, this is always a very special time for all of us in Cottage Grove because whether it's Girl Scout Gold or the Eagle Scout Award for Boys, we take great pride in the citizens of Cottage Grove achieving this huge important rank and so much so that the city Cottage Grove, like we're doing this evening for you, recognizing you for your amazing achievement in receiving the rank of Eagle Scout. Other than presenting you with this plaque this evening, we also, if you didn't check it out yet, if you go down the hall next to our council chambers here, all of the previous Eagle and Gold, Gold Scout, Gold Awards, excuse me, for girls and the boys Eagle Scouts are all up on a wall with their name and the year that they achieved that Eagle Scout. And so it goes back quite a ways. So you are going to be part of history here in Cottage Grove that dates back many, many, many decades. So with that being said, what I'm going to do this evening is present Kristen, right? Kristen with the plaque. I'll read that here in a minute and then once I'm done doing that, we all could clap and be excited, right? He goes, yeah, really? And then I'm going to ask you to tell the public what you did to achieve your Eagle Scout rank. So what this says is this Kristen Meyer, congratulations on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout through Troop 9005 Cottage Grove, Minnesota, presented this 26th day of June 2024 from the city of Cottage Grove, Myron Bailey Mayor. So on behalf of myself, the rest of the council colleagues I have here and the citizens of Cottage Grove, we want to congratulate you. All right. So now I'm going to turn the mic over to you and you can tell the public what your Eagle Scout was or your project was.
Yeah. So for my project, I had built three of the rocket style bat houses, which may not seem very impressive at first, but each bat house stands at over three feet tall and can each house up to 400 bats alone. And so I, me and everyone else that participated with me had put in a total of over 200 hours into the project. And so I'd built these down at Carpenter Nature Center. And the way they're installed into the ground is you dig a three foot hole, you mount it to a 20 foot steel post, hoist the pole into the hole, and then you pour in concrete and just let it set. And so all three of the bat houses are still standing and I've been monitoring them and will continue to do so for any signs of bats.
All right. So you all, you said three of them? You did three of them? And so if anybody wants to see your work, they go to Carpenter Nature Center to see it? Okay. And you said no bats yet or you're not sure?
I've not seen any bats yet.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah. And that's the hope with the bat house is that they can help to reestablish the population.
Awesome. I am for that too. Exactly. So I'm going to give you your plaque back here and then why don't we do a quick picture and then another round of applause for our Eagle Scout Award.
Is this your family over here? Do you want to come up and get a picture?
Come on up.
Come on up. Go ahead. Come on up. Let's get a picture.
Come on up.
Yep. We're making memories today.
Come on right here.
You guys go right here.
Right here. Absolutely.
Now, we've got to get a picture of that. Perfect.
Good.
All right.
Awesome.
Congratulations. See, I know Dave knows the handshake. Congratulations. Very cool. Palm and flag. Good job.
And again, congratulations to mom and dad. That I know, and I'm sure councilmember Thede remembers this, getting your, getting my son through to the end.
Yep.
Took some battles sometimes.
I never made it all the way to Eagle Scout.
Neither did I. So it's definitely an important commitment.
Proud of that young man.
All right. So our next item under presentations this evening is the 4th of July fireworks donation presentation. And I'm going to, for a moment, kick it over to councilmember Olson to introduce a guest. I was in the audience here and then we'll take it from there. So councilmember Olson?
Perfect. Well, thank you very much, Mayor. As everybody in the community knows, the Cottage Grove Lions Club is proud to hold the 4th of July event each year at Kingston Park. And the purpose of this presentation tonight is to really give thanks to our sponsors. But what I'd like to do is ask our past president, John Langdon, if he would mind stepping up to the podium. He's here tonight representing the Cottage Grove Lions. And maybe John could tell us a little bit about, you know, the event, when it starts, what we'll have going on, all of the rest of it. And I figure since we had rain for Strawberry Fest, the weather should be perfect for the 4th. So John, take it away.
That would be nice if we could get some decent rain for the 4th, right? Yes, we've had enough rain. So the event, yep, of course, is on the 4th. Start, I believe, grilling from five, at 5 o'clock. We go all the way up until about 10, 10:30, right about the fireworks are done. We'll be cooking hot dogs, hamburgers, cheeseburgers. I believe we're going to probably buy some more bikes again this year and probably raffle, give those away along with glow sticks as well, too. I know there'll be a vendor, McMart will be there selling ice cream. There'll be another vendor and I forget the name, but they'll be doing roasted corn and cheese curds as well, too. So yeah, looking forward to a great event and hopefully, yeah, the weather will hold out for us.
And it seems like every year, you know, we draw just a ton of people and you mentioned that we do the raffle there, which is something that I think people appreciate. So that doesn't cost anything. It's for the youth who come to the event.
Yep, absolutely.
That's on our dime as the Lions Club and it's just a way of sort of giving back to the community. So when you come, make sure you get your raffle tickets. And then typically we have Cottage Grove Fire, some of the police officers, maybe some apparatus be there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a good event and John is the girl master. I have to give credit where credit is due.
You did a great job yourself, though.
Well, I appreciate it. I'm a rookie, but I'm learning from the best. And we just want everybody to come out and have a really nice time.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So John, anything else you wanted to add on the event or anything like that?
Oh, that's all I got, James.
Okay, perfect. Well, Merrill, go ahead.
Thursday night, right?
Yeah.
Thursday night, yep.
Yeah. Thursday night, July.
Yep.
It is on the 4th of July. Yeah, absolutely. And we have some really awesome vendors that come and participate. And then too, none of this happens without, you know, the donations of some of our friends in the business community. And Mayor, I know you wanted to
Yes.
Take a minute to recognize some of those.
So for those who are watching at home, they can see it on the screen. So frankly, if we didn't have, you know, we love the Lions. They've been fantastic, whether it's Strawberry Fest or other events and including being kind of the one that kind of sets up the 4th of July and the family picnic and the family fun. We couldn't do the fireworks without the sponsors who are on the screen. So 3M, Hy-Vee, North Point Development, which is fairly new to our town, Renewal by Anderson and Tennis Sanitation, all of them donated $5,000 towards the fireworks, which gives us a grand total, obviously of $25,000 worth of fireworks. So when you, and I don't know truly what the comparison is from how much they spent for Strawberry Fest, for fireworks at Strawberry Fest, which are really nice. I think it's
Well, I negotiate quite a deal with them.
Yeah. So he gets, he gets, Dave gets a good deal. But the point of the matter is if you haven't been to the last couple of years where these same, frankly, these same businesses have been supporting the fireworks here in Cottage Grove for quite a few years now, it is one heck of a show and it is constant. So if you really want to see an amazing display, come on down to Cottage Grove, have some food and some fun with the Lions. And then if you happen, I know you might not see North Point or you might see employees though of all these businesses or whether it's Hy-Vee or Tennis or whatever, please thank them. Again, they didn't have to do this. They're doing it because they're part of our community and they want to give back to our community. So on behalf of myself and I know the rest of the council and our staff, thanks once again to 3M, Hy-Vee, North Point Development, Renewal by Anderson and Tennis Sanitation.
And thank you, John, for being here tonight to tell us a little bit about the event.
Thank you.
Looking forward to a really great night.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You got it. Thank you for coming.
Take care.
All right. So now we're on to number seven, which is the consent agenda. Was there anything council wanted to pull on consent this evening?
No.
I'd like to move consent.
All right. So we have a motion to move consent by councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you're here for anything that's on tonight's consent agenda, they have all been approved. Eight is approved dispersment, which is eight A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have motion by councilmember Olson, second by councilmember Cambada. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings. We haven't done this evening. Ten is bid awards. We do have one this evening, which is the Highway 61 River Oaks R-Cut Project Bid Award. And our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, is going to walk us through this. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So bids were received for this project. And just as a reminder, because it's kind of a unique project, a different project that we haven't done in our community before. So this is that reduced conflict U-turn intersection. So that's where our cut comes from. Down at the River Oaks entrance, which kind of shares that southerly entrance for civics as well. And really what this is, is a safety enhancement. It's really meant to improve that access from the safety perspective. What you do is there's that median where you can cross through right now, which allows for accidents, which are the right angle accidents, which are by far the most severe at those high speeds. It removes that and it constructs two U-turns in pretty close proximity to the existing driveway. Sometimes on Highway 52, you see them maybe like almost a half mile away. These are pretty close, so it's still very convenient. And cars still need to wait for a gap, right? So it's not necessarily allowing cars to get out faster, but it really eliminates that severe right angle accident and almost just kind of prevents people from making bad decisions, right? You see a lot right now where people are double stacked in the median and now one car can't see. So it eliminates all those issues. And MINDOT has a good history with these and it sees about an 80 to 90% reduction in serious injury and fatality crashes after they're implemented. We obviously have been fortunate to not have a fatality there. So this is a little bit of a proactive project, but that's why we were able to get grant funding for it. And I'd like to talk about those benefits because unfortunately, when you see the bids, we did have our lowest bid was higher than our engineer's estimate. We got good competitive bidding from the standpoint, we have seven contractors who bid the project, but we are about 18% over that low, the base bid versus the engineer's estimate. And so about 1.2 million, the grant funding is $1,000,010,000. Initially, it was 710,000. MINDOT actually gave us an extra 300,000 to help make sure we could fund as much of this project as possible through their local partnership program grants. So the city's still only looking at from this, you know, construction, a little under $200,000 of a cost share effectively. And that we would fund through our MSA funding. So we wouldn't be looking to fund that through general levier taxes. So considering all of that, and when you look at these higher bids, there's a couple of things that could have gone into it. At the time of year that we ended up bidding it, there was quite a process to get through, to get through all the different approvals at the state level and the grants. And it is a very challenging project because we have to build it basically day by day with lane closures, almost like what you're seeing with the bridge right now down at Innovation Road. So you actually have to, you know, do some work and each day just do a little bit of that concrete work. So it's a challenging project to estimate and that could have gone into it as well. So knowing that we have that MSA funding, we'll be able to, you know, tap into, once the East Point project is done, we are comfortable recommending we award this bid. And unfortunately, we are in a little bit of a time crunch because we do have to award a project by the end of this month to tap into those grant funds as well. So with that, we are recommending award and I will stand for any questions.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Ryan? Yes, councilmember Olson.
Ryan, thanks very much. I'm glad you brought up the fact that we'll be able to utilize MSA funding for that. And you know what that means and I know what that means, but there might be people watching at home who don't. So would you just take a minute to explain what that municipal state aid funding is?
Yep. Yep. So the municipal state aid funds, cities get them, counties get them, and we can use them for either projects on our own state aid roads, like 80th Street, East Point, Douglas, Jamaica, or we can use them when we're working on a higher level road, like a county road or a state highway in this case. And they do come through the gas taxes where that is, funding is received from. And it's split out based on the size of your community. And like I mentioned, really, we've been using the current funds each year for our East Point and Jamaica project, which we're of course wrapping up this year. So we'll have that funding available then to tap into once that project is complete and paid off.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure anybody watching at home, if they had any questions, understood that we do get those municipal state aid funds allocated to us on an annualized basis.
Yep.
And, you know, that they are available to us for projects like this because otherwise that would put quite the burden on the taxpayer here in the city of Cottage Grove. Appreciate it.
Awesome. All right. Thank you. And oh yeah, councilmember Thede.
Just out of curiosity, it was, you know, you said we're basically getting funded a million, 10 of that?
Yep. So just over a million dollars will be grant funding paying for that project.
And that's a combination of state and federal?
So that is a grant through the state of Minnesota. So it's our local partnership program is the name of the grant. So that's where MINDOT partners with local agencies to fund projects like this.
All right. I was just kind of curious, the fact that it's also a US highway, whether there would have been any other monies or could be any other monies to even to take up that other 200 grand.
So we did reach out, Mayor and Council, to MINDOT to see if there could be additional funding. They kind of did a somewhat unique thing in awarding an additional 300,000 already. So that was really, I think, you know, really what we could get. We did look at the different pots, right? When this project came up, it was actually driven by some challenges in that area with some crashes, not as severe, a couple of years ago. And MINDOT really directed us to this grant fund that was the most acceptable. But with that additional 300,000, that was really the most we could get for the project.
And again, what was the base for the grant? Who's sponsoring that grant or where does that money come from again?
Yep. So that's a state, that's a state grant.
That's also a state. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Cambada.
So every time we update, upgrade a road, I probably ask this question, but the current style of interchange was acceptable up to a certain volume. Highway 61 has been in its current configuration for as long as I can remember. So as we, as volume has increased, it's become more and more unsafe, which is preempting what we're doing now. What's the life expectancy of this type of improvement in terms of volume and, you know, infrastructure, in terms of infrastructure investment? Is this something that will kind of last until, unless or until there needs to be some sort of like metered interchange there? Or is there another next step if we see volume increases beyond what are projected?
That's a good question, Councilmember Cambada. So this will be the first one in this area. I think you will actually see MINDOT start to and continue to look at installing these along Highway 61 down in Denmark Township. We certainly have other intersections. It definitely will have a longer lifecycle. The safety is always there, right? That's safety improvement. Then it really becomes access, right? You're, we're growing, Hastings is growing. So you're going to see more and more traffic that'll make the actual physical access harder. You would not see signals at any of these intersections just with this type of speed. You know, there are two at Manning and 10. Really, as Cottage Grove continues to develop, and this is obviously far down the road in that area, you'd likely see more of a system of frontage roads and continued interchanges, right? Like we have at Innovation Road, 80th Street, 70th Street. One of those would likely be some way down the road at Manning Avenue and potentially another one in this area. Now, that's pretty far out, but that would be the next step. Unfortunately, there's not, it's a challenge, right? With these freeways, they are there to move traffic fast and efficiently. We're really fortunate, MINDOT is working with us on this type of project because otherwise they just close the median and then cars have to like go down to Manning and turn around. So I can't, you have an exact answer for the lifetime, the life cycle, just because it'll always work. It's just a matter of the longer delays. But you really have to see development come through this area, our future growth to have those frontage roads and interchanges.
All right. So there is, there is a plan for what happens next?
Yep. That would be the next step. It's pretty far out, but that, like we saw down to Innovation Interchange.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, council, at this point?
Mayor, I'll make, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2024-096, awarding the, through Highway 61 River Oaks R-Cut Project to Pembroke Companies, Inc. in the total amount of $1,203,803 and the most important 45 cents of your life.
All right. So I have a motion by councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.
All right. Next is 11 is a regular agenda. We do not have anything on our regular agenda this evening. So now we're all the way down to council comments requests and I will start with councilmember Cambada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any comments, but the only request I have is that leading into the holiday weekend, everyone have a safe and fun and responsible holiday.
Thank you. That's perfect. I agree with you on that. Councilmember Olson?
Mayor, I just have a few things today. First of all, I want to thank councilmember Thede and the rest of the members of the Strawberry Fest Committee for all of their hard work and effort putting on this year's Strawberry Fest event. It was made more challenging for them this year due to the weather. There have been years where we've had some rain and there have been several years where we've had really great weather and the rain never makes it easy, but the team was out there working hard. I know that the Strawberry Fest marketplace was packed full, even though it was raining. And you can tell when you look at the fields out there, but you know, that whole team worked very, very hard to bring us to this point, get us through this point. And what you may not know is now that it's over, the work doesn't stop because now they're already planning for next year. So thank you to all of the Strawberry Fest Committee members. Also want to thank all of our ambassadors who served for the last year, Strawberry Fest ambassadors who represented the city of Cottage Grove, including councilmember Garza's daughter. They had their time in the sun and now I believe, Mayor, they had the coronation, was it Monday night?
Monday night.
Yep, that you spoke at. So now we have a new batch of Strawberry Fest ambassadors and I'm sure they will be just as wonderful as the past batch. But we were very pleased to have all of those folks representing our community for the last year. Again, reminder, July 4th, 5 o'clock, Kingston Park for this year's family friendly 4th of July event. Thanks again to all of our vendors who have agreed to come. Thanks again to all of the Cottage Grove Lions members who are going to be there to make it a really fun event. And thank you to all of those who made donations, as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, so that we could have a great event. I also want to say thanks to our city staff for all of the hard work and effort they put forth with respect to Strawberry Fest. People may not realize it because, you know, they just sort of see the end of, the end result of the work, but we had Parks people there working the entire festival, whether it was raining or not, emptying garbage cans, making sure that all of the waste receptacles were available, making sure that the recyclable receptacles were available and taken care of. We had just a bunch of our public safety folks there, police, fire, EMS, et cetera. A lot of the city staff were there representing the various elements of the city, including Discover Cottage Grove. They were part of the Strawberry Fest marketplace. So this is all work that they're So, uh, this is all work that they're doing, uh, in addition to their quote-unquote day job, and, uh, they deserve a lot of gratitude and a lot of credit for being there for us for Strawberry Fest. So thank you again. I know in many cases, uh, the departments, uh, sort of put a kibosh on, um, whether it's a vacation or anything like that, so that we have appropriate staffing to keep the parks safe and, uh, make sure that everybody's having fun. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to turn it back, uh, over to you, and, uh, again, you guys, 4th of July, 5:00, Kingston, be there.
There you go. Councilmember Thede.
So, thank you, Councilmember Olson. You kind of, kind of stole my, my thunder there, but, uh, but the, the, the gratitude is, is definitely, uh, uh, worth it, uh, just again, to, uh, thank all the people on the committees and, and so forth, uh, to also recognize that they are volunteers. You know, they, none of them get, get paid for, for that, uh, fun that they have, and, uh, and for the most part, it's all fun. Sometimes it gets a little stressful at times for different things, but, uh, but, uh, the, uh, the gang does a great job. We've had a couple of new people on, uh, on the committee, and, and, and some of the people volunteering and so forth, but, uh, you know, we, we definitely, uh, can always use more people, and so everybody out there that's listening, uh, you know, it, uh, yeah, let's get involved. We'll probably, uh, right now, what we'll end up doing is just kind of do some, some review of this year's, uh, activity and, and, uh, you know, things of that nature, and then, uh, discuss some of the, uh, things that we should change for next year and so forth. But people wanting to get involved, uh, probably typically in the fall, kind of come in the September timeframe or something like that, you know, be on the lookout, uh, we'll start having some, some meetings and, and things like that. Uh, also, obviously, we have our Monster Bash, uh, Halloween Parade and so forth, uh, as we always do, and, and that'll be in October, end of October, uh, uh, right around Halloween. And, uh, you know, it's, it's great to start getting involved at that point, too. So, uh, um, again, thanks, and also, as Councilmember Olson said, uh, to, uh, everybody, uh, in the city, uh, that, uh, I mean, the time you put in, people put in and so forth, is, it's tireless, and, and, you know, it's, 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 uh, can be exhausting. Um, we had, and I haven't, I haven't got any, you know, firm numbers and things like that, uh, uh, it wasn't too bad. We, we, we escaped a, a fair amount of the rain and so forth, uh, until Saturday afternoon, and, and then the skies decided to dump on us for about an hour and a half, and, and, uh, and that's the reason why the, the soccer field's now look, look the way they do, because I could have probably just about, uh, taken the canoe out there after the rain got done, but, uh, so, uh, but, uh, it's great to have a, a place like that, to have that festival, and, and I know, uh, there's just tons of people that, uh, really enjoy it, so, thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Thede. Uh, Councilmember Garza.
Well, excuse me, I just want to say, the Strawberry Fest was amazing. The parade was awesome. We had such a great time. Um, thank you so much for allowing my family to be a part of it. Josie loved her last year as an ambassador, and it was an honor just to be a representative of our community. So she really enjoys it. She's going to wear, wear her Strawberry Fest jacket proudly, so if you see her out here, make sure you say hello to her, because she's, she, now she can wear it without being with the other ambassadors, so she's very excited about representing our city, so.
Good.
But otherwise, thank you all. Have a wonderful weekend, be safe out there. I know the holiday is coming up, so just be safe. Keep in mind, there's other people on the road, so just be careful out there.
Fantastic. Uh, just, uh, one thing, uh, added, other than everybody else, obviously, kudos on, on the festival, on our outgoing ambassadors, our incoming ambassadors.